So good evening, everyone. So I'd call to order the park board meeting at our special meeting, a joint session with the city council at 6:01.
That we please.
Sure. Riley?
Here.
Connolly absent Tillman?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
And Callahan?
Here.
Okay, and then.
All right. So we'll start the committee to hold meeting for City of Batavia. We'll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Back? Knop?
Here.
Chancet? Baron?
Here.
Wolf? O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
We have 10 out of 14.
Great, thank you. Allison?
Yes, I would like to welcome everybody tonight. Thank you so much for taking time out of your crazy busy schedules for tonight's joint city council park board meeting. It's my great pleasure to introduce to you Lacey Lawrence of Hitchcock Design Group, who will be moderating tonight's session.
Right, so bear with me a second. I'm going to try to share my screen beginning, and I also have built in men here from Hitchcock Design Group.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We can hear you. Start the beginning. Alright, thumbs up, everybody can see the screen. Good?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, so the reason why we're all here today is to discuss the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan. So just to start out tonight's engagement, we want to kind of briefly run through the project, why we're all here today, and one of this key purpose for why we are actually undertaking this master plan at this time. So first off, Hitchcock was hired by the park district and the city to prepare a vision for the Fox River Corridor that runs through specifically through Batavia. And with this key purpose in mind, so we've had some kind of preliminary meetings with task force, park districts, and city staff, and kind of these are the main focus that we have heard that is a priority to focus on while evaluating outcomes for the master plan. So and they're listed here, he wants to be making river connections, providing additional river activities for residents, improving the river ecology and health of the river, developing a river-centric brand or economy that can be focused central around the river and the river walk, as well as evaluating the dam and depot pond opportunities. So with that, first kind of kicking off the master plan phase, and our planning effort kind of has these four key phases as part of it. The analyze phase, connect phase, envision phase, and implementation phase. So currently, we are in between analyze and connect. As you can kind of see, it's not always a linear process. The analyze phase can influence some of the connect phase and vice versa. So we'll be actually coming to you later in the process to summarize our outcomes of analyze. Specifically for today, we're going to be focusing on next phase. So with that, some key milestones, just to be aware of the schedule, we are currently have a public online survey that's available for anyone participate, and it's running between 19th and May 2nd. We're also doing stakeholder interviews with key organizations, individuals within the community and adjacent communities. That is also happening right now through May 2nd. And then, as I kind of previously mentioned, we have our joint board meeting, which is the next time we'll be here together, which will be May 18th, to kind of review the outcomes of the survey and the stakeholder interview, as well as analyze phase. And understanding what's out there today and what kind of influences and jurisdictional constraints we'll have to consider when developing the plan. With that, we'll go into the connect phase. I just wanted to remind everybody to, if you're interested in staying connected, this is the link to the survey, as well as websites. We have a website that'll be linked to the park district and city websites. You can also navigate to the survey from this website. But you can also go strictly to our website, but it's Batavia Fox River Corridor. And also posting social media, anything related to the planning efforts specifically with our planning to use kind of this hashtag, so any kind of social media posts that are done by joint organizations can all be found by searching this hashtag. And prior to this meeting, we had sent out three kind of questions to you for consideration that will kind of help start brainstorming this workshop session. So first, we kind of want to understand, what do you think are the priorities of the community from this master plan, as well as what are key drivers that may influence our implementation, as well as key outcomes that you'd like to see happen as part of this master plan? So with that, what we plan to do, since we have just under an hour, and about 14 or so individuals, so we plan on kind of going round robin, having everybody have a couple of minutes going to talk on one of these questions, or multiple questions, if you feel anything that you think is very important for us to understand. With that, I'm going to stop sharing. And then I'll rely on Allison and Laura to kind of call on individuals, and you have the floor, and we'll kind of help engage at times, kind of facilitate the conversation.
Sounds good. I'll go ahead and kick things off, Allison. We're going to go with calling on a couple of the aldermen, and then pass it over for Allison to have one of her park board speak. So I'll just kind of do it randomly. Joe Knop, would you like to kick things off?
Oh, I'd love to. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, everybody. It's an important topic. And if you've watched me at more than two meetings, you know what my first question is going to be. What's it going to cost? I think we all want to see improvements to the river walk area. We know what a what a great economic boon it can mean for our community, and the potential for tax revenue it brings in. But at the same time, I think we have to keep in mind the taxpayers that are going to be footing the bill for all of this. And that's, that's always my concern on everything that comes before us, and that's kind of where I am still today. But I'm open and excited to hear what ideas you come back to us with.
Okay, and then on to, how about Tony Malley?
Hello, everyone. If you could put those questions back up would be, would be helpful. But I see the connection of especially in this, this time that we've been going through, people want to get out more and feel like connection to nature. And that's where I think we have tremendous opportunity with that, combined with our River Street, which is in the fourth ward. And just making, you know, tapping into that Fox River Corridor as a, not just a river running through, but something that can invite, that will invite more people to Batavia. Obviously, I'm with Joe, money's always a concern. But there's, I think we can have creative ways where it can be, we can generate revenue, bringing people into town. As, as, you know, a highlight that attracts people to spend money in our town. So that's kind of where, where I'm coming from.
So that you're, what you're, what you're saying is that you think that this has some real possibility to generate some additional tourism-like behavior on a regional basis?
Absolutely. And I apologize, and I was scarfing down my dinner there.
Alright, for every two of Laura's city council members, we have one park board member, so I'll go next. Just to remind everyone too, that the questions are in the chat box. So that way, if anybody needs to go back to them in case the screen changes, we can always head to the little chat box. Next up, we're going to go with park board president, Pat Callahan.
Thank you, Allison. So I, I think to me, the outcome of the plan is, and having the community have a very clear understanding as to what, what the challenges that we face with the development of the river corridor. You know, not to mention, you know, it seems to me that over the, over time, you know, people's opinions or positions related to the dam, you know, river ecology, downtown redevelopment, all the things that were just mentioned in terms of kind of as a driver behind what we want to see Batavia become, all have dollar values associated with it. But they also have what I call deeper implications, right? You know, we could easily not do anything with depot pond and take the dam out. That takes care of the ecology of the river, but now we have a mud flat. So I think part of, part of this, and your challenge is to create a master plan that clearly delineates the causes and effects of each aspect of the plan, so that the community can be well-informed as it moves into implementation, both of cost, but also outcome. And I don't mean outcome as in, hey, this is going to generate X, Y, and Z, but outcome as in, if this, then this. I'm not saying it needs to be a flow chart, but it does need to clearly delineate what people have shared with both us and city council over the years that they think is the number one thing to them. Well, everyone's number one thing has an impact on other people's number one thing. So being able to kind of matrix or lay those things out so that it becomes a little more discernible and a little more understandable, I think is going to be critical to the success of the plan.
Thank you very much.
So, so Pat, you're, you're talking about the, the interconnectivity of decision-making related to recommendations and how they impact and are intertwined with one another to perhaps cause a variety of outcomes, just with the initiation of a single decision.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Laura. Well, I think, you know, when we did River Street, whenever that was in 2012, you know, we, the architects, landscape architects came by and said that, you know, no one knows that there's a river running through the city of Batavia hardly. And from that point on, we kind of were moving towards making the river more accessible to residents of Batavia. So, you know, what we have with the river is basically, we have an economic engine that we haven't been utilizing. And, and I really am excited about what we're doing here tonight and what the future is going to bring as we utilize the river to, for people to enjoy for recreational purposes, for economical purposes. You know, it was all to Manu, who the landscape architects were, and they were saying that, you know, the river is kind of like we joined the city from the west and the east, and the river is the center of the living room. And the Peace Bridge kind of brought, you know, River Street to the, you know, government plaza. And so I think that's, that's to me is the, is the main concern for, for me, and I think for, for most of the people in our community, is that we now reuse, we start using the river. And I really do applaud the park district, you know, they were purchasing properties along the river to make it more accessible. And I definitely appreciate that. And I hope, I guess this is, would be my question one that I'm answering. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Wolf?
Okay, I'm unmuted and everything now. I guess I'll take a stab at the top one, the top priorities. I think the biggest thing that I feel like has to come out of this is an overall view for the river as a whole, not just the simple parts of it that connect to our river walk, or that are, you know, near where the dam is today, or, you know, the real downtown quarter, but the rest of the river, and how that becomes utilized or protected, you know, in whatever fashion we decide, that we put priorities on those, because this is not going to be a simple, short-term plan. I mean, this is a long-term plan with a lot of different goals in it that I think have to be, you know, brought together and then receive enough community support that, one, we can find, you know, the physical dollar, the money for it, but also the support behind it. I mean, our river walk was done with a lot of volunteer effort and a lot of cooperation by a lot of different groups to make that happen. And I think that's going to be something really important from start to finish on this project, that, you know, there is that buy-in and that there is that support, community-wide, to make something of this magnitude happen. I mean, we have a lot more than just the, you know, half-mile downtown that you can see from the bridge that has to be planned for and looked at for, you know, the next 50 or 100 years. And how do we set that up, that that piece by piece happens? That's really the thing that I think is, is more important than just, gee, do we want to, you know, have a, an economic engine downtown by having kayaking and things available down, right downtown? But how do we handle all of that area, you know, to see it rise to its best use over the next 50 years? So I think that that, you know, really should be something that we think about. I mean, we've got a lot of other cities around us that are trying to do the same thing we're doing, plan out how we're going to handle that, you know, that great asset within our community. And, you know, I feel like the biggest thing has to be the community's buy-in to where we think this needs to go. Thank you.
Alright, next up from the park district, we have Vice President John Tillman.
Hi, everybody. How are you? So as far as the last question, I think is somewhat key. I agree with, with Alan, I agree with Pat in that we need to have a very comprehensive plan that can utilize the river, can see in the future as far as, you know, what we can do with the community downtown, but from a park district perspective, how we can program the river and the river walk. But from the, from the master plan, what do we, what do we want to see from the master plan? What does the community need for the master plan? They've heard us talk about spending money on master plans, and, and they've seen it in our, and if they've watched our, our different meetings. But have they actually seen any concrete results come from that? We know what we've done with it. But have they seen something come from that that's tangible to them? And I think that what the community really needs to see is a real action plan that says, by this time, we want to do this with the river. By this time, we want to do this with some of the surrounding areas by the river. For instance, I mean, the park district has been buying property down by the river off of 25. What are we going to do with that? Let's do, you know, is it just a green space? Fine, define it, say what we're going to do with it, and then let it sit as the community says, fine, we're going to buy into that. They said they were going to do that, so they did it. Same thing with every place else around, around the river. To Pat's point, are we going to get rid of the dam and just make a mud pile? Or are we going to do something about it? And when are we going to do something about it? I understand, I respect the fact that there's a cost to all that. Trust me, it's not, I'm not discounting all of that. But I think we need to say, we paid for a master plan to say A, B, C, and D, and that A, B, C, and D needs to also have dates attached to it. Obviously, you know, some of those dates are going to be, we're going to bring this in front of the council. We're going to bring this in front of the board by this date, and we are going to try to accomplish something by this date. And then people can start seeing tangible results to say, oh, this is exactly what they said they were going to do. Maybe it's a little tweak of the difference, but they're doing something based on the money that we paid for this master plan. That's, that's my, that's my real answer to the third, to the third question. I have answers to the other ones. So if anybody wants me to talk about those, just let me know. Thank you.
We can go through everybody, and we still have time, and go through again.
Great. Alderman Callahan?
Thanks. I agree with a lot of what has already been said. I'll just add that maybe a, one of the priorities that's going to need to happen for us to succeed will be a level of cooperation and collaboration with the surrounding communities, so that what we're doing makes a cohesive sense of the river upstream and downstream, which then makes it a regional destination for all of us. So that's the only thing I would add on the priorities.
That's true American.
Thank you. Alderman McFadden?
There we go. You got the mute off. Good evening, everyone. On, on the priorities and, and I guess outcomes to some degree, I agree with a lot of what's been said, especially with what John's saying about need for concrete actions. One thing I'd add to that is, you know, the, the prior, the community and its priorities aren't monolithic. There are different constituencies within the community that will value things differently. Some will value the economic impacts more than, say, the ecological impacts. And there'll be another group that will do the exact same thing, and there's going to be some people who, for whom, you know, spending money on anything like this that, you know, just smells of raising their tax dollars is not going to be, and not something they like. But I think whatever we come up with needs to engage, you know, sort of a wide range of community interest and priorities, whether it's economic recreation, environmental, walkability, bikeability, all those different things need to be addressed. Because there's going to be portions of the community that are going to latch on to all of those things. Obviously, they all work together as a whole, but we need to make sure that all those constituencies understand that there's something that they value in the plan for them, even if, you know, some of the stuff they could care less about, we need to make sure they understand that the things they care about are in there. That's, that's what I'd say about that.
Alright, next up to bat, we have, since we're the park district, we have to talk in sports metaphors. Up to bat, we have our treasurer, Kevin Riley.
Okay, thank you. So when I was going through the questions, the third question, the understanding, what does the community need to receive from a master plan outcome? And when I was running, last running for office, at the League of Women Voters, they have those forums, a candidate forum. And so a question very similar to this came up, and I still remember paraphrasing the question and then my response. But one of the questions was, you know, the river is important to Batavia. It provides aesthetics. It has long history. And so the question came up, you know, should the dam be removed? What happens if the dam is removed? And if the, if the depot pond becomes a mud flat, what's going to happen? Will that be used? And that stuck in my mind. Whenever this has come up, you know, those questions really drive, you know, home to me about what can we do? And that's something that the community is looking for, because when that dam is removed, something's going to happen and really can't predict what that is. And that's that cause and effect that has been brought up a couple of times. And this group, about three or four years ago, committee of the whole, had, had a meeting on the, on the dam removal. And questions came up, which are very good questions, and I don't know if answers have ever, you know, been determined. But it was like, who owns the dam and who manages it? And what happens if the dam is removed? What is the water level? And, you know, until I think we know those kind of things, it's hard to predict what kind of recreation we can have, what kind of businesses will come down, if people will come down, until we find out what's going to happen when the dam is removed, which seems to be the consensus from the state. So, you know, from the closest I can get to what, you know, what is it, what does the community want? It was from the question that I was asking, you know, I think we need to address that and, and give the community a good answer before we can even move forward. Thanks.
Alderman Baron?
I'd be happy to pass mine on to John Tillman. He did such a great time. But anyways, you know, everybody's really echoed a lot of what, you know, has gone through my mind on this. Definitely the bikeability and walkability, connecting the river walk, really making it a, you know, a straight trail down for the people on the bike, a safe recreational opportunities, save the depot pond, and also sustain our national natural environment in that area. Many people really enjoy to not only bike, but also walk and enjoy all the beauty that's surrounded by that. And how we get there is really listening to the residents and having the engagement from them and listening to them. And that's been said many times, you know, bringing in the different groups. And for all of us, you know, leaning on our, as I said, our expert commissions. You know, for us, our biking commission, get their input on that, environmental commission. I know that the park district has their parks, their outreach of their park of volunteers, you know, really also leaning on them for ideas for that. And, let's see here, and then also communicate as stated, you know, keep the residents informed along the way, make sure that we're all on the same page of where they get their information from, and the message is consistent. That's going to be a very key, is that the message is consistent from both bodies. So there is going to need to be that need for cooperation. And then really bring value to those services. A lot of times, you can sit there and put up this plan, but if you don't have, you can say, we're going to do this, but if there isn't value to it, you know, you'll say, oh, we're going to put in kayak, you know, but launches. But if it's not, if it's just like a little stand for somebody to push off on, I don't think that that's the value that, you know, really our residents are, so really take a look at the value and just listening to the residents and what their vision is for that.
Alderman McFadden?
You just called on me a minute ago.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Alderman Miller?
Thank you, thank you. I think the survey will tell us a lot of what the community would like to see. So starting there would be a good starting point as to what we should incorporate. It should also tell us the priorities of cost versus ecological concerns. Also, working both of those in would be good, I think, and providing options of what happens to, if the dam comes down and we don't try and save the pond, what happens if we do something that is environmentally friendly to keep the water levels where they are? I think would give people a good idea of what their options are, because ultimately, they're the ones that are going to be paying for it through their taxes. Highlighting the river with the trails and making it accessible for walkability, bikeability, but also something that gives businesses a way to utilize their, their property behind would help be a good economic generator for us, something that incorporates a lot of that, that would add value that people would see to help ease the tax burdens, but also something that people can do and bring people from out of town. I think was the other thing we were talking about, something with a, I think Mr. Tillman was talking about a phased, like a phased plan, something that people can see, this is where we're starting, this is what's next, this is what's next. And something that is, is going to be very general, from something that is general to something that is very detailed, because some people would like to see something very generalized, but some people like to get into the weeds with a lot of stuff.
very generalized, but some people like to get into the weeds with a lot of stuff. Just kind of helps give something for everybody. Thank you.
Next up, we have Commissioner Tara Gray.
Hi. So it's, I was around a few different groups of people this weekend, baseball and things starting. And I have at least two people say to me, is the pond going to disappear? Is Peg Bonson are going to disappear? Is the River Park going to disappear? So based on those inquiries alone, I think that people are starting to hear and like people like me that didn't live here 20 years ago when this first came up. Like, oh, wow, something's going to happen if you were going to move forward with this. So I would say that those are, those are, as far as questions go, question number one, the community's top priorities from what I have heard seem to be maintaining the depot pond of some some sort, maintaining the facilities that we do have at the Riverwalk. And then to speak to what some of the other commissioners and aldermen have said, communication with people. As you know, the similar situation is going on with the school district right now, and there's I think how we, the more transparent, the better, instead of doing things piecemeal or not sharing, you know, not sharing everything. I think those, not doing those things goes a long way and getting community support. So that is my answer.
Alderman Yur.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, as I've spoken a lot of council meetings and stuff, everybody knows I'm an advocate. And so the the river and all rivers, for that matter, are really important to me because I love the recreation that they provide. And there's been talk about priorities and there I think there's a bunch of number one priorities, and I think they they all kind of follow each other. Restoring the ecology of the river, I think, is important. So getting removing the dam. But not at the expense of the pond. And I've told when I was out getting signatures this year for my reelection, several people in my ward live directly on the river. They asked, what are you going to do about it? And I told them flat out, I will not vote for any plan that has the pond disappear. So if, no matter what comes out of this, the pond has to be a priority, because that's that's the history of Batavia right there. Everybody kind of expects that is is something that is that is in our community. So you've got the history aspect of it. You've got the ecological aspect of it. You have the recreation aspect of it from kayaking and and canoeing, fishing, et cetera. And the fishing will improve when the dam comes down. And those things continue to cascade. As you do those things, you'll see the other opportunities come up for developments along the river. Maybe something comes first from a development, so many anticipating things are going to change, but it's important that I believe it was Drew talking or John talking about having this this plan that it's, hey, we're going to do this, and we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and this is when we're going to do it. I'd love to have specific dates. I don't know if that's gonna, if it's going to happen that way, because money gets into it. Joe talked about that right at the beginning. What's the cost? And there's, there's a lot of costs that of doing something and not doing something. So I think we really need to get ahead of it. But I think by starting with the dam and saving the pond, everything can start to cascade from there.
Alderman Saron.
Hello, thanks. I, like Mark, believe the priority number one is is figuring out that the dam and the depot pond, and I would support keeping that for sure. The you know, I don't have a whole lot more to add new. The the thing that I noticed a little challenge, I guess, is, you know, as Pat said, everything ties together and and the the dam and depot pond are a great example, but as John said, we got to do it in stages. So coordinating that is is a major task. I will say this, when, just from a personal observance, when we built that parking lot just north of Pal Joey's and and cut down those trees, my first response was like, wow, we're cutting down trees. That didn't seem right, but it was a great thing to do. When it was done, it's like, wow, look at the river. It's awesome. I say that for a couple of reasons. One, there are little things we can do that can make a big difference. So as we're looking at the master plan, I don't want to hold off on things that we can be doing today. And little things can make a big difference. And then, and I'm not afraid of, I don't want us to be afraid of failing. Let's let's try some different things. Obviously, cost is an issue, but I'm not against, or I am against waiting for the perfect scenario, because I don't know if that'll ever come with with how everything ties together. So everything else I would say has already been repeated. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we already went through the four commissioners in attendance tonight. Laura, did you have additional aldermen?
Yes, Mike Brizardo.
Yes, thank you, Laura. Yeah, I hear everybody's concerns and what everybody's stating, and I think that this is a fantastic start. Getting the community input is very important. I also think Fox River needs to be a destination, and we need to embrace this natural resource that we have in the center of our town. I think some of the drivers for this will be the revenue that we could generate by driving people to our downtown, and that revenue will come in way of sales tax and property tax revenues. We have some fantastic riverfront properties for sale or are coming due for sale, and I think we have to get on top of this and keep up with the other towns. Some of the other towns surrounding us have done a lot of things with the river. And we've done some, but I I think there's a lot of improvement that we could do. And I think not only do we have a streetscape as a beautification of our downtown, but we need to concentrate on a river too, and that could as well be a driving factor to our businesses for our city and for our downtown area.
Thank you. And Mayor, do you have a few words you'd like to share?
Yeah, I would just like to make the observation that if you look at the correlations of history here, Batavia is here because of the Fox River. I mean, it was the same all up and down the river in the 1830s. All the towns were founded, and the reason was that the river was here and the river power was here. So there's a, there's a huge history moment here that I think we have to appreciate. And beyond that, and it's already been said, but beyond that, in Batavia's case, we use the river initially as kind of an industrial source. And we built three very large windmill factories along it, which in the course of history probably produced more windmill manufacturing kits than probably any other place on the face of the earth, as far as the number that were made here and assembled here and then put on railroad cars, which were built on tracks right next to the river to get the windmill parts shipped out of here. And then in 1871, we burned down the city of Chicago. And suddenly, there was this huge demand to rebuild the city in non-combustible materials. And where could you find that non-combustible materials? But in Batavia, in stone quarries that were right along the Fox River. And that's where we get quarry park from. And so you've had all these moments of history. Well, then, as we continued on with these factories that we had, we turned some of them into other uses. And in 1872, the Shumways came to town and opened up a foundry, and that was there for 123 years, I believe it was. And when it was over with, one of their claims to fame was they made the mold for the Academy Award in Batavia for a number of years. You come up to the building where we are at at the North Island Avenue and the council chambers. I think we can certainly make the strong argument that the council chambers used to be a research laboratory for Dunbar Capital. And then this room that is the city council chambers in the late 1960s was manufactured, the fuel lines that were used in the rocket that landed on the moon in 1969. And so right here in the city council chambers, we have perhaps one of the more historical points of all Illinois that we can show this. And there's been a book written first on the moon and by the three astronauts in which they credit the flexible fuel line that was used in the rocket was made in Batavia, Illinois. It was in the council chambers. So we have this very, very rich history here that I think we now have the moment to kind of reinvent the history and create a second chapter of it. And as it's already been applauded, alluded to, we have some great opportunities along this river for redevelopment of different types of probably residential use to a larger grade, but also recreational. And certainly, the the depot pond is one of the great moments of Batavia's history, because that was hand dug about 1870 by wagon, by horses being pulling plows. And that's the reason it's only as shallow as this, so that they could put a dam in here and then divert water so they would have two banks, two channels of the river instead of just one channel of the river. So they had four banks and to build the factories on. So the depot pond is one of the great historical moments in our history. And the fact that in 1958, it got glorified as the front cover of the Saturday Evening Post even sweetens the whole picture of this thing. So we've got some stuff going on here that is unlike, I've had other mayors in here touring this with me, and they say, you guys have a history in Batavia unlike anybody else has got. And so I'm very pleased that the Park District and the city government have kind of joined together. We've hired professionals to come in and kind of pre-plan how we can really take advantage of this river and its strong identity to this town and really make it into the historical landmark that it truly is. And I just want to thank the appreciation of of the governments coming together here and working together for what I think is going to be a really exciting new chapter of Fox River history in Batavia in the years ahead. Thank you.
Okay. And I think that that concludes everyone from City of Batavia.
Right, great. Do we have any other? And some of the people had some additional comments that you felt you didn't get to cover. Well, it was your turn. We can collect those now. I think John Tillman.
I do, actually. I always have stuff to say. I think there needs to be an additional element to this entire conversation. There are a lot of people, a lot of people in town who have no idea that we even have a dam. What the dam is, what it does, why it needs to be repaired or removed, how it affects the depot pond. All of that stuff is is, they know there's a river. They have no idea about this discussion about the dam and what its effect is. I think we need an education to the community to say, by the way, we're thinking about talking, you know, we're thinking about doing something with with the river along the banks and so forth, but there's this other element. There's an element of this dam that is eroding and we need to repair it or remove it or whatever. And the effect of each one of those will be A, B, and C. Because when you have a community of, you know, 26,000 plus, and when, and I don't have any statistics to back this up, but when half of them don't have any idea what you're talking about and why, that's going to create a problem for everybody when it comes up to this discussion in their council or on our board. Yes, we have a lot of really passionate people about the river, a lot of passionate people that already understand the dam. But there is a lot of new, new folks that have moved into town. There's a lot of younger folks. There's a lot of other people who just have no idea. They they live on the east side of the west side, never come across the river, have no idea about what's going on with the dam and that whole conversation. I really think another outcome, another priority for this particular conversation needs to be an education program to say, this is what we're doing and why.
Hey, Laura, there's Mark. I wanted to add something to. Because the the education is supremely important. We talked about this before in city council. Because the last time this came up, obviously, got voted down when we sent it out for a referendum. And there were some there's, my understanding is there were things that were being told to the public that were untrue about why the dam has to stay and why it's better for the dam to stay. And there are plenty of articles and plenty of research that can be shown how removing the dam improves the ecology of the river and how it's absolutely necessary. And that has to be a huge thing for this is education about all things, education about the history, why we want to keep the pond, education about the ecology and how it improves the fish life, improves the bird life, improves everything. And it's it will be, we will all have people pounding under doors saying, don't do it if we don't educate people properly. So I agree with John on that.
Tony, go ahead.
Go ahead. Does this, does any last other?
Yeah, Tony here, just to continue on with what Mark says. You know, part of that education can be done by, you know, the some of the drivers behind this and tapping into what the mayor talked about in the rich history, you know, the reason, reason that Batavia is there, is here is because of the river. The reason there was manufacturing on the river for windmills was because of the river. There, so so having history be a driver, the sustainability and the ecology and the environment. I think, you know, things can be done in the plan that that speak to these things and can lend themselves to education. You know, like corp, you know, the one thing that just crossed my mind is, you know, if we want to talk about sustainability, that keeping that depot pond is going to be an engineering feat in my eyes. And I think there's some opportunity with that to demonstrate some sustainability and, you know, preserving environment and the ecology and honoring history with maybe using windmills to as incorporated as part of keeping that depot pond there. Just some thought that crossed my mind now, but having those drivers, I think, will be huge in getting people on board. You know, we all know that there's, the amount of concern among our population, not just in Batavia, for the environment is significantly increasing. And I think that's a great opportunity. This, this project is a great opportunity to tap into those to make them drivers of the project that can lend themselves to educating people for the, you know, this isn't just something that we're doing to make it nicer. We're doing this because this is what's right for the environment. This is what's right for sustainability. This is what's right to honor history. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other last minute comments before we wrap up? I don't know, Bill, if you had any other closing questions that you felt maybe we didn't get addressed to some of the questions, or we can do a brief summary of what we heard.
Yeah, just just one, one quick thing. I mean, there is a, you know, a lot of gravitation towards the the dam and the pond scenario and how interconnected they are. And and that's, that's been, you know, true since the inception of all of our conversations. I would be curious if the Park Board and City Council would entertain a, just a quick straw poll on, you know, who would be in favor of seeing the dam removed? And who would be in favor of seeing the the depot pond remain or some combination of that? Allison or Laura, could you help us with that?
I'll chime in on that one. I I think that if costs were of no issue, probably an overwhelming response would be that they would like to see the depot pond preserved. I think a significant part of an honest answer to that question is what it costs.
Bill, aren't we being a bit premature though to, we don't have a plan for what we're doing with any of the riverfront right now. That's what we're talking. And what if that plan includes something that would deviate from a vote that I would give or not give on on anything else? So I I personally, I think we're a real little premature in saying, I definitely want this, and I definitely want that, before we understand what we're really talking about. I don't, I'm not an engineer. So it's like, what happens if the dam gets removed and all of the ramifications that, what happens to our quarry? Our quarry, you know, swimming area, what happens to the depot pond, what happens downstream, what happens to Clark Island? What happens to all these different things when we change the the overall environment of the river? I personally need to understand all of that before I can vote for or against anything, not against, I'm not saying against, you know, your, the fact that eventually we'll need to do that, but I'm just not at a point where I can give that vote right now. I'm not saying against, you know, your, the fact that eventually we'll need to do that, but I'm just not at a point where I could give that vote right now.
Yeah, that's a good point. We should probably move away from the singularity of that question that I was seeking to answer there, um, in favor of the interconnectivity that's been brought up a few times. And just not fully, uh, having vetted out any of those relationships thoroughly yet. Um, yeah, I, I agree with your assessment. Thank you, John.
Yeah, sure.
I think we're probably getting close to wrapping it up. You wanna bring us home later?
Yeah, I was just kinda summarizing as we were going through to some of the key words, phrases that I've been hearing through our whole conversation tonight. And you can chime in if you think um, I missed anything or, um, misrepresented anything. So first things that I kind of was hearing is that obviously Batavia has a, is steeped in history. We wanna tie that into the plan as well as providing a detailed action plan with dates and costs, um, as well, a long-term action as well as trying to get some of that low-hanging fruit, something that can be accomplished day one out of the gate um, to kind of show progress towards our long-term goals. I'm also hearing communication, um, with the community as well as education is gonna be critical. I also heard, um, regional destinations, so not just Batavia, but working also with adjacent communities to create a regional destination within this whole corridor. Providing additional recreation opportunities and programming. Also the opt, the recreation, or sorry, economic benefit that this river could generate for the community. Um, and then ecology, and that kind of goes to our last conversation with the keeping the pond um, while modifying, removing the dam to improve the ecology of the river. You can, that kind of summarizes a lot of the key statements that we heard tonight. With that, if anyone doesn't have any other closing remarks, then I wanna thank you guys for coming and providing your feedback again. Um, let me see if I can pull back up. We do have the online survey that's available right now. Um, that has some additional kind of questions more relating to maybe some recreation, understanding the key stakeholders in the community. Here it is. So also come check out our website. This is where we will be posting kind of updates and documents relating to the planning efforts. And I think that's it. Stop sharing.
And Lacy, we just need to conclude, um, the park board and city council meetings.
Great.
Thank you, Hitchcock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Pat, would you like to close the park board meeting?
Sure. Uh, so I entertain a motion to adjourn the, uh, park board meeting, uh, special park board meeting.
So moved.
Again.
Motion by Tony and second by Riley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right. Thank you, guys. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Cal meeting.
So moved.
Second, Saron.
Moved by Wolf, motion by Wolf, second by Saron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Look forward to the next meeting. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
We have six minutes.
Just enough time.